This is a regular meeting of September 15th, 2023. And before we start with roll call, I want to say that in case you're flying to Ethiopia this weekend, a greeting, you can impress the people there by using their language and greeting, using the greeting Salaam. And Salaam means peace be with you. And for Maui County and Lahaina, let's hope that peace was going to be with all of us.
Councilmember Pro Tempori Tasha Kama.
Aloha kakahiaka Chair and Salaam to everyone else.
Vice Chair Yuki Le Sugimura.
Salaam everybody and good morning. Looking forward to a productive meeting chair.
Councilmember Tamar Paulton.
Aloha kakahiaka and Maluka ala salaam.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Salaam, aloha Chair. Councilmembers, community members, there's no test fires at the Lanai District Office. Mahalo.
Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez.
Aloha kakahiaka kako. May Maui Nuiakaama. And there are no testifiers at the Molokai District Office. Salaam.
Councilmember Tom Cook.
Aloha and Salaam Chair and Council.
Councilmember Nohelani Uuhajans.
Gomari.
Councilmember Shane Sinensi.
Aloha and Salaam.
Council Chair Alice Lee.
Salaam kako.
For the record, I am County Clerk Moana Ludi, also present from the Office of the County Clerk, our Deputy County Clerk Rochelle Thompson, and Legislative Division Staff Joyce Morishige, Lawrence Aldana, and Del Yoshida. Joining the meeting from the Office of Council Services is Director David Rotz and Deputy Director Rochelle Kawasaki from the Department of the Corporation Council is Victoria Takayasu, Corporation Council, and First Deputy Corporation Council Mimi De Jardin.
Last week, someone shared with me the origin of the expression "talking in circle." Talking in circles. I'm sure you've heard the expression. It's not something you ever want to be accused of doing, right? Repeating the same points. It was made a derogatory expression to undermine and shame the practice of indigenous peoples. The practice of storytelling while sitting in a circle. In order for a people's oral history to survive, the stories must be repeated. In discussion, in discussing the Mo'olele, the lessons are remembered and passed on, and knowledge can continue to be built upon. There is value in repeating a story that should be memorialized in our collective memory. Ike kupuna. When attending our meetings from her district office, Councilmember Paulton would refer to her location by the traditional name of Maluulu Olele, the shaded breadfruit grove of Lele, and often showcases art depicting Maluulu Olele in her video filter background. I recently had the pleasure of hearing Kaipoke Kona recount the history of Maluulu Olele in its rich details, giving it more life. The investment of human capital in planting and maintaining the grove. The infrastructure of OAI systems, working symbiotically with nature to maximize abundance for both people and the natural environment. Increasing rainfall, aquifer recharge, nearshore water discharge, attracting an abundance of fish to the healthy estuaries of flourishing Ahupua' to feed everyone. In a news interview, Hoku'au Pellegrino went on to say, "It's not so much only what you would have seen, it's what you would have felt." The climate of Lahaina was very different. Lahaina was once an entire agroforestry full of ulu, coconut, and calo, and many other canoe crops that our kupuna brought along with them. Lahaina was a lot cooler, and it was a food forest. And it's important for people who have never heard this history to also understand that this ulu grove of Lele was not a one-off. In Kona, on Moku'ou Kiave, there is also a large ulu grove referred to as Ka'uluru that stretched 32 miles long from Honau'au to Kaloko, about half a mile wide. Noah Ke'ku'eva Lincoln writes, "The trees were a good distance apart, so as to give room to their boughs to spread out vigorously on all sides. And the spreading trees with beautiful foliage were scattered about from the shore along the side of the mountain as far as we could see on both sides. Between the trees, sweet potato and paper mulberry were grown where shade from the breadfruit offered shelter from the scorching Kona sun. It was a huge source of food, one that would even produce in drought years." So what happened to Maluulu Olele? Mr. Pellegrino described an 1887 article that specifically talked about pioneer sugar company pushing the cut sugarcane up against the ulu trees and burning them down. The article describes the outcry from Hawaiian families and the broader community begging them to stop because the ulu trees were not just a symbol of Lahaina, but they helped to sustain that population. The grove of ulu that provided an abundance of food free to the people was replaced by sugarcane to turn a profit for the colonizer plantations, plantations that then diverted the streams that set the stage for this devastating fire. Sometimes we assume that people know the story of a place. Sometimes, when it's retold, one person in a group will hear it for the first time. Sometimes, someone who heard the story before will learn a new detail or make a new connection and understand it in a new way. If we don't tell our stories, not only will they not be preserved, but other stories will be told in its place and erasing our culture. A story about a banyan tree as a symbol of Lahaina. We have the blueprint of what worked. We don't need to reinvent the wheel to prevent fire. I've heard it again and again from the community, the call for the restoration of Maluulu Olele, Moku'ihina, and Moku'ula. A story of abundance. Now go, go talk in circles and tell your friends this story of abundance. E'ulu, e'ola. Mahalo for this inspiration, Jan Mather. News from this, news this morning from Molokai compel me to add this short pulle in closing. When things get hard, may we love each other harder. May we continue to fight for each other and not against each other. May we hold each other close and not let go. Amama, wanoa, lele vale.
Mike Moran for the Kihei Community Association. We just wanted to say a few words to commemorate our wonderful arborist, Ernie Resents. He was instrumental in helping our community numerous times. I would say particularly with, there were a few times when segments of our government wanted to remove some of the few trees that we have in South Maui. And as laypeople, we knew we didn't want it to happen, but to have a professional like Ernie come in and speak for the reasons why, as an arborist, why they should be preserved, was certainly helpful to our cause, and it was reassuring to us that we weren't on the right path. Sometimes when a valued community member passes, we use the term, let's not mourn, but let's celebrate life. And we would just express that to his family, how much his life needs to be celebrated so it's not forgotten. All the outstanding work Ernie did, and what a wonderful legacy to be associated with his trees. We all know all the multiple value of trees. And lastly, KCA, we just recently worked on a partnership with Maui Green and Beautiful for a project called Reshade Maui. And we created a brochure. It's dedicated to Ernie Resents for all the wonderful work he did. And again, it's called Reshade Maui, and it's for Maui Green and Beautiful and KCA in partnership. So.
Resolution 23-200, extending condolences to the family of the late Ernest Ernie Resents. Whereas Ernest Ernie Resents, one of the most respected arborists in the history of Hawaii, passed away on June 13th, 2023, at the age of 91, in Waileku surrounded by his family. And whereas Ernie was born on January 17th, 1932, at Maui's Puunenehe Hospital, to Ernest and Victoria Resents, it was raised in Bu'u'ohala Village in Waifu. And whereas Ernie graduated from St. Anthony's School in Waileku in 1950 and began attending the University of Hawaii at Manoa to study secondary education. And whereas Ernie's first teaching job was in Honaka'a, Hawaii Island, where he met Arlene Humphries, the love of his life, Aileen. Pardon me. And whereas Ernie and Aileen married in 1958 and purchased a home in Makawau, where the couple raised five children, cultivated an urban forest, and established a gathering place for their 10 grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. And whereas in 1960, Ernie began teaching at Maui Technical School, now known as the University of Hawaii Maui College, starting a career that spanned more than 50 years in which he taught courses such as All About Trees. And whereas Ernie returned to school to major in Biology at the University of Oregon and took courses in Horticulture at the University of California Davies, Davis developing respect for and expertise in trees. And whereas after returning home, Ernie was instrumental in establishing the University of Hawaii Maui College's Agricultural Careers Program and successfully lobbied the state for funding to construct a classroom and greenhouse facility to teach Horticulture, Abora Culture, and other plant management courses. Whereas Ernie explained his love of trees to Maui Green and Beautiful last year. Trees provide us with fruit, flowers, shade, and numerous environmental benefits. And whereas in 1991, Ernie drafted the first Maui County Planting Plan, a 179-page document to advise the county on how to care for its street and park trees and to identify exceptional trees. And whereas in 2016, Ernie researched, wrote, and coordinated the current third edition of the Maui County Planting Plan, a 243-page guide for caring, pruning, planting, replanting, removing, and preserving trees and other plants in a county with maps prepared by his friend and forester, Bob Habdi. And whereas in 2015, Ernie was recognized by the International Society of Abora Culture for his outstanding performance as a teacher and advocate, and was honored as only one of three in the world to receive the True Professional of Abora Culture Award. And whereas Ernie was a longtime advocate for protecting the Lahaina banyan tree, which he regarded as a living treasure, noting it as one of the county's most valuable assets. Whereas Ernie's tree care philosophy was simple. Treat trees as you want to be treated. They will reward you with benefits you could not find elsewhere. Now therefore, be resolved by the Council of the County of Maui that it extends its condolences and deepest sympathies to the friends and family of the late Ernest Ernie Resents, that it expresses its gratitude to Ernie for his dedication to sharing his knowledge of tree care and promoting abora culture in the county of Maui. And that certified copies of this resolution be transmitted to Ernie's children, David James Resents, Diana Lee Fain, Catherine Resents Duffy, Laura Ann Resents, and Judith Ellen Davies, Kenneth Dwayne Sparkman, Chair, Maui County Arborist Committee, and the Honorable Richard T. Bissin Jr., Mayor, County of Maui. Member Johnson.
Members, even in the midst of uncertainty, pain, and confusion, we can find a sense of purpose. And while there might not be a quick and easy fix to the emotions we are feeling as a community right now, purpose and meaning is one thing that helps us carry through. When we honor the lives of those who have passed, there is so much we can learn about purpose. When we hear about lifetime of deeds and accomplishments made for the sake of service to our community, there is so much to be inspired by and integrate into our own lives. The life of Ernie Resents is one such model we can draw from. A born-and-raised Maui boy, Ernie followed the track we often wish for our young people. Go get some training and adult and an education, then return home, come back, and give, give, and give back and apply what you've learned. Ernie did just that. Like the trees he revered, he dug his roots in, spread his branches out wide, and planted seeds to flourish throughout our community. These seeds were literal and metaphoric. He not only planted hundreds of trees that continue to shade us today, the efforts he seeded also continue to bear fruit. The Maui County Planting Plan, for example, was written and extensively researched by Ernie. Ernie called the plan his legacy, and it is indeed something that lives on, an invaluable resource to help government and tree lovers, landscapers, and gardeners from across the county pick the best trees and plants for any area. It guides us to care for and maintain these trees and plants. This plan, I've been told, is so exemplary that is referred to by other counties across the state. Another example of the perpetual impact of Ernie's services, the agricultural program he created at Maui College back in 1975. Ernie lobbied for a classroom and greenhouse facility, which were eventually funded by the state. Ernie would spend decades there, teaching generations of gardeners and future arborists. Ernie was beloved by his students and internationally recognized for his expertise. News articles recounted how he danced with and cared for his wife and the love of his life, Aileen, although all their, all their days together, throughout their days together. I was there when Ernie was honored last year as an outstanding older American in this county. And it was just less than a year ago that he's, that he was still passionate as ever in these very chambers, telling us from the podium right there, how important it is to have trees in our parking lots and to follow through the guidance of the Planting Plan. Ernie was quoted as saying, "Treat trees as you want to be treated. They will reward you with benefits you could not find anywhere." He is also quoted as saying, "Maui is my island. I was born here. I grew up here. I raised my family here. I want to leave it a better place." As we continue our work here in these council chambers, I hope we can take these words to heart and value our natural surroundings as sincerely as Ernie did. In our work, I hope we can also dig in deep and leave this a better place. Thank you, Ernie, for all you've done, and thank you to Ernie's Ohana for sharing this great man with our community. I extend my heartfelt condolences for your loss. As a side note, I want to recognize Councilman Rollins Fernandez's opening remarks and how important they are and how it is applicable today for Ernie's legacy. So, thank you so much.
I too honor and cherish Ernie Resents. I have a memory forever of him. And at that same ceremony, when he was being honored for older American, I went up to him and I said, "Mr. Resents, I have three cypress trees in my yard that my normal tree trimmer does not know how to handle because of the height and the size." And he immediately gave me the name, and he passed on the name of the tree trimmer. So in my phone forever, I have his name. But how I search for him, I search for him under Ernie Resents. That's my side notes. I can always find him. But he is, I will, I will say that whenever you saw him, he had the biggest smile. He lived out of enthusiasm. He loved his wife and family. And he has a most interesting house that will, that's in Makawau. And whenever I pass it, I think of him because it looks like a historical home. And one day when I saw him, he said, "It is a historical home, and he has worked to maintain its character like that." And I hope one day it could be recognized for the work that he has given in a lifetime. So we will.
My name is Diana Resents Fain. I'm Ernie's firstborn. And I'm going to try to hold it together here. We are very humbled for you folks to honor our dad in this way. We knew him even more than just the tree man. He tutored me in high school algebra, and I aced it, thanks to my dad. Always encouraged us to get a good education, which we did. And I want to just thank Maui council members for what you are doing. My dad would be very honored and humbled. So thank you.
Good morning. I'm Judy Resents Davies, Dad's number five. As is very obvious from what has been said today, Dad loved the island and people of Maui. While the Maui County Planting Plan would be considered the crowning jewel of his accomplishments, I think Dad's biggest goal and accomplished goal in life was to bring beauty and quality not only to the island of Maui, but to the people who lived here into their lives. And he did that in so many personal ways, as well as just simply planting trees where they would flourish for our enjoyment. So I'm very appreciative to you, Dad, for that. And an experience I can share with you guys about being Ernie's daughter is that everywhere we went on Maui, if I was with my dad and he would talk to somebody, after he would talk, he'd say to me, "That's my former student." Everybody was Dad's former student. And when my sisters and I would walk around on our own, oftentimes people would say, "Oh, Resents girl." And that was just because of Dad. So lots of memories because of how he invested in this island and its life. So thank you, especially during this time on our beloved Maui, for recognizing Dad's contribution in its vitality. Thank you.
The next testifier is Susan Pacola Davis.
So on Resolution 23-199 that has to do with modular developments. I'm not sure if you all heard this morning in civil beat. Remember, it's not a fact until it's signed by the governor. But he's going to back, back off on some of his proclamation to, on housing, to restore environmental review, restore the statute for relating, or the statute relating to conserving historical resources. Provision altering the authority of the Land Use Commission. A state-level zoning authority has been removed. The Sunshine Law is back. And lastly, I think the greatest news is that none of it's going to cover development in Lahaina. So we shall look forward to that. We do have people here on the island that want to build modular homes. Currently, they are building them on driveways, personal property. That's not what we want. We want housing for our people that are now going to be coming out of the hotel. Maybe they're going to be told October 6th, 7th. We don't know. Nobody knows what's going to happen on October 8th. We only know what we've heard. So just putting that out there. Okay. Okay, now on 23-203. I hope you got my PowerPoint presentations. If not, I've done it a couple of times. I don't know why they're not getting through, or they are getting through. The formal investigation, which I tried to testify about yesterday, is lacking the Board of Water Supply or the Department of Water Supply. The water supply has been tested, but not the homes. The homes will not be tested by the water, the Board of Water Supply. And so those that want to, want to test their homes will have to go and do it themselves at their own cost. The latest testing that's been on the Water Board's website says that they are taking samples from inside numerous fire hydrants. And there was a presence of lead. And their reasoning for why they might be finding things is that the water pressure within the distribution system prevents the lead from migrating back into the system or reaching customers' homes and businesses. Not. An abundance of caution. The Department of Water Supply is flushing the fire hydrants to remove the contaminants. If you don't know what flushing is, flushing is opening the fire hydrants using high pressure, high velocity, and they're not telling us where that water is going. The water advisory, there are still residents that are advised not to use their tap water for drinking and cooking. They're advised to have ventilation. They may not understand that, but that's because of the vapors that they may not smell, or they may smell that, they may smell that cause respiratory issues. You limit the use of the water because of skin exposure, possible rashes, itchiness, and hives. I hope our residents are following everything that the Department of Health is putting out. I do not agree with any showering or any bathing, but their advisory is their advisory. So Dr. Andrew Welton was here, I'm going to say, three weeks ago. He was with his Purdue team. He expressly left a document that says all of the chemicals that are supposed to be tested for if you have a wildfire. And I haven't seen that. This one's short. 85, I support the adding of hurricane, fire, or other disaster as defined in Section 127A-2 Hawaii Revised Statutes. And then last but not least, not least, is the debris removal. Bill number 86, first I'm asking, do not take any action here today. Please move it to a committee. This document is 10 pages. I certainly do not believe that the public is aware of what is in this document as far as alternate removal, government removal, or enforcement. I don't think that they will know that they could be declared a nuisance and health hazard for their properties. I do not believe that they know that they might get issued a notice of violation and an order to any property owner or person in violation of this ordinance or doing so in violation of the terms of their permit approval. Not even I want to read this whole thing, but last night I did before I flew over. They would have to file an appeal within a 30-day period. There's going to be collection of unpaid civil fines. I'd like to see where their money is going to come out if they do get charged fines. There's going to be judicial enforcement. This is why I want the people to understand that these pages are very important for them to know about and to actually be able to come here and testify about. And I don't see anybody here that may be testifying about it. Hopefully, you do. And lastly, unemployment is already having problems. It hasn't been funded yet.
My name is Jan Mather, and I am testifying on Resolution 23-203 as an individual. I didn't, before I do that, I would like to thank Councilmember Rollins Fernandez for her opening remarks and making me cry, ugly cry in the back of her, that highlighted what was and what will be again in Maluulu Olele. I know this council actually recognizes how important the forestry of our island is because I think I was here for the last ceremonial resolution for Bob Habdi and then your ceremonial resolution today for Mr. Resents. Anyways, regarding 23-203, I support the resolution. I'm going to join the talking circle on this particular challenge because in 2018, we, right, the, the community of Lahaina, we engaged in the disaster response, much like the entire island of Maui did this time. And then, as now, we asked why we weren't prepared, right? Why the county agency's response was so lacking and how we could do better the next time. So fast forward, and this is actually not the next time. This is the next, next, next time since something like this has occurred. And all of those questions are still pertinent, probably exponentially so, right? And usually I don't call people out. And even though I know former director of Mima, Herman Adia, is a kind gentleman, the precedent was that we knew he wasn't equipped to do this. this job, right? We all knew that. Okay, maybe most of us who were part of disaster response knew that. So it's a hugely important department. I mean, they're not always activated, but it's hugely important hazard mitigation and all hazard mitigation, right? Being able to respond to disaster on any level. So it's really important for us to know what occurred and what's actually still happening, because obviously the testifier before us was talking about water, and how we can do better the next time. And although multi-hazard mitigation is the best path forward for us, right now we have too many vulnerable communities still out here in the county that we like need to investigate what went wrong right now so that we could like implement change right now, right? There's no time to wait for an after-action report two to three years from now. We need to investigate as we're going through it so we can like pivot to make better decisions for our people right now. So I do, I urge you to create this committee immediately and engage in the process transparently, inviting all agencies and stakeholders, because this needs to be shared with the entire community to gain their insight as well, right? Our, like, yeah, our most powerful thing is our people and what they've been going through.
Yes, I'm testifying on 203 and 202, and this is Christopher Fishkin. Council members, myself and my associates have been talking in circles for over a decade, and that goes both ways. I have submitted materially relevant testimony, including documents and a professional video produced for Akaku, but never aired for fear of retaliation. That's in my written testimony. Council members, this is 203. You're sadly going to discover that a formal investigation by this council, the fire, will also lead back to you. This council shares in the responsibility for what happened in Lahaina and which gross negligence continues to happen to present time. Just drive from the tunnel to Lahaina and look at the land. Uku Mahame, Olualu, Launio Poco. The council has both legislated intentional loopholes into its ordinances and has failed to legislate for public safety. For decades, the council has relied upon the very county administration officials and county attorneys who have worked hand in glove with developers and their professional consultants to help draft your legislation. In 1994, with the help of then-councilmember Alice Lee, the Lotline Consolidation and Resubdivision Ordinance was passed, which allowed subdivisions to avoid going through the same standard of review as a normal subdivision process under Title 18 of the Maui County Code. Title 18 requires all the department agencies to review and comment on the proposed development and conditions they impose, fire, water, sewer, et cetera. This ordinance circumvented layers of agency review, which allows for public and environmental safety, et cetera. The attorneys supporting this kind of development said at the time that it's just moving fence lines around. Additionally, the Federal Coastal Zone Management Act, implemented at the county level through SMA permits, is not being properly implemented and is being selectively enforced. Council members, look at the picture in your Westside Community Plan. You didn't legislate to prevent it from continuing on to the buildings. The picture is, the whole area is burnt in 2018, the whole thing. Nobody here thought, what if that fire kept going? That picture is such an admission of negligence. Did you do anything since then? It says right there in the plan, they should, quote, "encourage" the development of fire breaks. Encourage who? You are the legislators. You write the laws. You should have adopted by ordinance protective measures urgently to protect the people. Your names are on the cover of this community plan. So which county official wrote the language "encourage"? And you allowed a six-story building for affordable housing to be built up to the edge of this land, which burned down. Ms. Paulson received a notice by a staff member of the mayor in a transmittal, it's attached to my written testimony, about Peter Martin not completing his SMA-conditioned fire breaks in Olualu. Was anything done? We've been telling this council with whistleblower Christopher Salam for over a decade that developers, their professional consultants, their attorneys, and administration directors are circumventing the Federal Coastal Zone Management Act and using the loopholes you allowed them to write into your legislation.
Resolution 23-203, please move on to your second item.
To avoid environmental review, public hearings, and public safety. Okay. 202. The administration should be required, not encouraged, to select a qualified municipal firm to locally control all the federal, state, and other monies coming in to rebuild Lahaina and to help Lahaina residents. But what about now? What about accountability for the money that's coming in now? This is what any professional county government does. The fact that the council has to recommend that, which is common sense for local governments throughout the United States, is telling, isn't it? Urban Futures in Hilo, for example, is a nationwide municipal finance firm which specializes in bonding and assessments. They previously tried to educate the county on how to determine formulas of assessments for the thousands of developer deferral agreements, which have never been assessed or collected upon in violation of the county charter. But of course, because this council and its mayors are under the thumb of the most corrupt government attorneys in the United States, you can't even take your own advice. And so while I applaud the substance of this resolution, it's absolutely necessary. The present corp council will either advise that it's not really necessary, or recommend an old local boy CPA firm with connections to corp counsel. Why? Because the present corporation council is part of one of the most corrupt departments in the history of Maui County. And the last time I said that, corp counsel attorneys tried to have me named as a suspect in a criminal investigation. This mayor's administration has specifically refused to even name a West Maui liaison from its administration to West Maui after the fire. So I wish you the best with this resolution. I absolutely support it.
Next testifier is Kyle Ellison, testifying on--
Thank you for having me here today. I don't have a prepared statement, so I'll shoot from the hip and heart here. I've been one of the leaders of the Kula Hub, leading the Kula response after the fires. My house was, you know, smack in the middle of it, started right behind my house. My testimony right now is I just want to speak to the urgency on two fronts of the cleanup efforts in Kula, and also kind of get some clarification on the language in Bill 86, the way it's currently written. We probably, in the days and weeks after the Kula fire, the Kula community, as I know everyone is aware of, mobilized, like so many other hubs on the island mobilized, and we removed, I don't even, well over a million pounds of green waste off the mountain, just with personal chainsaws and, you know, individual Tacomas going down to green waste, and just removed so much green waste off the mountain. My concern right now is that with the county language and the county wanting to come in and help with the hazardous tree removal, which, don't get me wrong, we would love to help, there is an urgency to this cleanup, given the rain. We're just, we are one rain event away from the next preventable disaster, and we simply do not have the time to be waiting on the political process to play out as it may normally do. And so I just want to testify to the urgency that we're experiencing in Kula right now on getting this situation remedied and rectified as quickly as possible. My second concern in reading the language of the bill is it seems that the way that it's currently written, if a homeowner does not agree to the right-of-entry and opt-in to the county's method of debris removal, which again, probably is not going to happen in time before we get a big rain, then they need to submit an alternative plan of action at their own cost. And if they don't, they will officially be considered a public nuisance by the county. And we're already five weeks into this process of, I mean, we've been hammering in Kula for five weeks, cleaning up on our own with just small-dollar Venmo donations, and we're getting a lot done. And we would love the county's help, but I just want to make sure it happens quickly enough before, again, the next preventable disaster takes place, whether mudslide, landslide, flooding. If you've ever seen that gulch on a Kona Lo, it looks like East Maui. You'd think that you are driving to Hana on a flash flood with how much water comes down under that bridge. I'm also concerned about that bridge that goes over the gulch right there and in the affected burn area. Again, that, I mean, that's our main, that's the main road up to Hollyokla National Park. That is a major thoroughfare. And the structural integrity of that bridge, flames went right under it, it could be compromised, and the size of the logs that are malka of the bridge right now, if they were to be caught up in a flash flooding event--
Three minutes.
Well, thank you for all the work that your team has done after the debris, the removal of the green waste and just helping neighbors. It was really amazing spirit of aloha, so I want to say that. The Bill 86 is about individual homeowners and the process for removal of debris is what it's about. And hearing you, and I'm just wondering, are you asking for, from your testimony, are you asking for county or government to help more with the tree removals or that whole process that you went through?
Is he still on? He is, he's still connected, but he might just be having some connection issues on his side. We can come back to him.
And thank you for the opportunity to testify on Bill 86. My name is Andre Philman. I'm the owner of a burned house up in Kula. And as Kyle already hinted, our neighborhood is really eager to start the debris cleanup process of our properties. And I personally feel strongly that the entire process is moving along way too slowly, and it's probably hampered by, in some cases, unnecessary red tape. My biggest concern really is that my neighbors, whose houses are still intact up there, they live in the toxic ashes and the dust produced by my property or the other burned structures. And Bill 86 even emphasizes that danger of the debris, and in the later part even suggests fines for property owners if they don't clean up in a timely manner, they all opt out of the federal cleanup program. So I urge you really, please, if you do, do everything in your power so we can move forward with this debris removal process. And we're still awaiting the release of the right-of-entry form needed for the Army Corps of Engineers to start the coordinated federal cleanup process. And as we understand it, the county organizes this entry form process, and after an initial direct contact that we had, the flow of information has really stalled. And if you can, please make people that are in charge aware that the importance of better communication and direct communication with the affected community members, not through a website, but they have the contact information, please get in contact with people directly. Also, some neighbors feel that they are forced into using the federal cleanup program if there is no clear guidance from the county on what the process is, if they want to opt out. So I'd really like to raise the awareness of urgency and pass Bill 86 so that property owners can understand the requirements and the associated costs if they want to do a private cleanup, so that they can make an informed decision going forward as quickly as possible.
So you have addressed the exact concern that I'm hearing from the community, and also, Bill 86 is actually what the community would do if you didn't use a federal process, right? So this would be the option. And do you think it would be a problem if it was passed today for first reading and then passed for second reading, which would be the next council meeting, and it's, I think it's going to be in October? Or sent to committee, and the committee then would talk about this? That would be the choice, from what you're saying?
Yeah, I strongly feel that this is a very, very urgent. We cannot politically delay this, as much as we might need. We should, we should move forward with this so that we can actually clean up as quickly as possible. And if the county doesn't provide clear guidance for property owners on what the process and the costs are if they want to do it by themselves, how can they make a decision whether they opt in or out of the federal program? And the longer it takes, the longer people have to live in the toxic dust, or if the rain comes, all these ashes will be washed away to other properties. And to me, this is, this is moving way too slowly.
True, what you just talked about, that's exactly what Bill 86 is, right? Is detailing the process that a resident would have to go through if they did not use the federal process, so.
As you read Bill 86, that is what the process will be. And you may know what the penalties and process is, but I guarantee you, the 10,000 displaced people of Lahaina don't know. And so you think that's fair to pass it today without everybody being aware of what's in that 12-page bill?
This is only establishing what the parallel procedure would be if they don't use the federal program. That does not require the people of Lahaina to follow this process, right? This is only getting things in place so we can actually establish what the process is, not forcing anybody to use any of this.
I'm seeing there's penalties if you don't follow an approved process, and nobody has been given a chance to even weigh in. The majority of the people in Lahaina don't know that this is up to be passed today. I don't know that it's fair to push something of this magnitude through without going through the proper process.
It only directs the Director of Environmental Services to establish the process, not what the process is, right? The bill doesn't say--
It establishes the penalty. The penalties will be established with the process not being known.
Then remove the penalties. I'm not a big fan of penalties anyways.
Is Bill 86, does this, because it sounded like to me that it didn't have very clear direction. So my question is, is this not clear enough in terms of direction from the county? Or is there something that's not clear?
To me, it only establishes that the Director of Department of Environmental Management needs to define what steps a private property owner has to follow to clean up his property and to get a permit to rebuild. The bill itself does not say you have, doesn't lay out steps and procedures that have to be followed by a property owner.
Next testifier is Mark Ross, testifying--
I wanted to talk about the actual debris removal. As far as Lahaina versus Kula, the sites are two quite different sites. We're obviously on a gulch, and a lot of our houses were built on the edges of the gulches, so the debris pile and the ash pile is directly going to affect the stream. We feel up country that it's critical that we try to move, I mean, I understand that we're trying to lump Lahaina in with Kula as far as, you know, how we're going to stop the debris removal, but these are two different terrains, two different areas. And being in Kula, as property owner, and with my house literally, you know, four feet from the edge of the gulch, all those toxins are going to wash into the gulch, and it, I don't know if everybody knows, but the end of that stream will actually, it actually ends at Kealea Pond, which is a federal wire life refuge, and that's like the last thing we want. So we haven't even been able to get the EPA to come up there and stabilize by spraying some of this spray tech onto our properties just to stabilize it in the meantime, and then we still have the debris sitting there. And it rained yesterday, and some of the ash that I have on my property literally is going over the side of the edge of the hill there. So if we get a big storm like normal, we're going to have bigger problems.
Mr. Ross, are you in favor or you're against the bill?
I'm in favor of, well, actually, I'm more concerned about expediting the removal process as far as getting, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers start, you know, getting our right-of-entry forms to us, let us sign those, get the Army Corps of Engineers in there, and remove the debris. We're talking 20 sites basically up in Kula. I think it's a lot smaller issue than, I mean, Lahaina's much more complicated than what we'd have to deal with in Kula. But the impact of the debris is going to cause a big problem for everyone, not just Kula. It's going to cause a lot of problems for everyone downstream, so that's kind of the biggest issue is like, you know, the longer we wait, we're asking for, you know, a lot of trouble coming forward with the storms in the winter and so forth. It doesn't take much-- I was basically testifying kind of about the urgency that, you know, all the homeowners up there have felt about getting the debris removed as soon as possible.
Testifier is Sam Small, testifying on--
Thank you for putting forth the idea--
Thank you for putting forth the idea that there be a CPA, a qualified individual looking at how the money gets procured and distributed for this event. That did not happen during COVID. There's, I think, $41 million of CARES money that, for which there is no proper procurement on record that allowed Mayor Victorino and past Mayor Chimo Apana to set up an ad hoc turkey distribution system using the CARES money to set up refrigerated trucks all around the county to distribute turkeys for Thanksgiving and Christmas along with gift cards for $125 for food that recipients were told was a gift from the mayor. That was not a gift from the mayor. That was our money. That was CARES money. And that kind of thing must not be allowed to happen with the extraordinary amount of money and the extraordinary levels you can imagine. There's a lot of money at stake and there's a lot of people that are coming in to try and rip that money off. So having an appropriate, non-local, non-connected CPA or whatever kind of appropriate financial controller, not connected to the community. The local values does not serve this community. This notion of local values that Victorino ran on and, and Mayor Bisson seems to be continuing with Bisson's usual practices of allowing exploitation of every aspect of this county to persist by local individuals, not hiring qualified individuals that come from outside this community that have real world experience is a disaster for this community. And that cannot be allowed to be the result of, of this fire. We need to use this disaster to transform this county into a modern municipality that is not exploited by local private business interests. So please, yes, an outside controller. You know, the Attorney General and the survivors' lawyers will investigate the emergency response much better than, than, than this council could ever do. This is a legislative body and you should limit the investigation to the legislative aspects that contributed to this disaster. And, and what are some of those legislative aspects? Do indeed look at page 34 of the West Maui Community Plan. That photo shows the fire coming just kissing Lahaina Town in 2018. And the community plan wrote language, has language that it requires all projects going forward to incorporate defensible space around their perimeter. It requires new buildings to serve as, as emergency shelters. But somehow it only encourages the development of fire breaks and bio swells that can be used for greenways and recreational paths. How did that language of encouragement rather than requirement end up in the West Maui Community Plan? Whoever's responsible, and you know, hopefully there are transcripts of all of those meetings and stuff, whoever supported and, and, and pushed back on that not being requirement, you know, the lawyers pursuing wrongful death claims probably want to know who those individuals are. Because that's where responsibility lies. Are there council actions that have been taken and ignored? You did an audit, the Z A E D audit was initiated by the County Council and it showed a clear pattern in the planning department of cronyism, intimidation, and corruption. Michelle McLean was at the heart of that criticism. And now she's been rewarded as an executive assistant working for Alice Lee? Are you kidding me? You voted to spend our money on outside lawyers to try and crush Chris Salem because his case, as whistleblower claims against Michelle McLean and others? And you want to litigate instead of resolving these issues and embracing the whistleblower claims? Those whistleblower claims are what contributed to this disaster. And Sherlee, I'm sorry, appearance of conflict. Please look up the concept.
Can, can you keep your remarks on the agendized item, please?
Investigate plea.
Thank you.
Know that if they.
That's three minutes. Chair, the next testifier is.
Okay, I guess we have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Aloha, my name's Kelly Kyahy. I am a Lahaina resident whose house did burn down. On this bill today, as a Lahaina resident, I, I don't see any other Lahaina people in here. And I personally can't, I mean, I have questions just seeing this for the first time. And there's a lot in there that just, to me, with the opting out part, that's not clear with fines and penalties. And there's a lot of questions that I don't understand this. So I'm not for this being passed today. I really do feel like Lahaina needs, you know, questions and answers and, and before we make a, a decision on what's right for us at this point. So I'm asking you not to pass this eighty-six today.
Next testifier is Jennifer Pedersen. I'm sorry, Pedersen, I'm not sure.
Awesome. I am a Napili resident calling in just to echo, to have a voice for Lahaina. I think it's clear that the needs from Lahaina and Kula have different needs specifically. So I'm not trying to be divisive, but I did want to jump on and have my voice heard on behalf of so many people of Lahaina who have not had a chance to even read the 12 pages because they didn't know about it or they found out about it last night at 10 o'clock at night. I did have a chance to read it and I've redlined a lot. So my formal request is to kick this to committee. Do you have all of those very important details, questions, and answers provided for the people so they can clearly understand what they are supporting?
Aloha, Kako, Koinoa, Jasee Law. Speaking on Bill eighty-six, eighty-six is the year of the fire tiger. I don't know if that was just a coincidence. And I thank you for your council services office because I heard tomorrow Paulson asked if the guy actually read the bill. And, and I kind of got lost in the first paragraph and it's, whereas not matter not consistent with or tending to defeat, da, 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 da. Bunch of lawyer talk, but now, once you get down to the other part, it's kind of straightforward. So I'll read it. Oh, I have some, a handout for the, the council members, if I may. Little bit of history there from the days of abandoned car disposal. So just as trees was Uncle Ernie Resins Kuliana, waste disposal is my Kuliana. And I worked as a, on a trash truck for a contractor, Pikno Pala for Quantico, which some of you know as the home of the U S Marine Corps. We moved several tons of trash of rubbish every day. The U S military generates Choko Pala, including the U S Corps of Engineers. The debris from the Lahaina fire is not rubbish. It is some people's whole life's work. I urge you to do what is right, Kono, and dispose of the town's ashes correctly, not just dumping in a pile and poo-nene with all the coffee cups and the happy eating donuts from the team of workers. Now is a good time to start building a waste energy factory and refine all the remains of Lahaina into biochar and use it to remediate theaina. And I don't want to hear anyone say we cannot because of such and such law. Malamaaina.
Well, Chair, members, this resolution urges the mayor to hire CPA firm or a similar professional entity to assist the county with accessing as much federal disaster relief funds as possible in the wake of the August 2023 Maui, Maui fires. These funds are much needed by our county, but navigating the federal government's grant procedures can be difficult and county officials focused on recovery efforts may not have the capacity to develop the expertise required to access all available funding. Therefore, I affirm that employees, CPAs, and other professionals that specialize in helping clients claim federal grants would be valuable to the county.
You know, when I first read this, CPAs, you know, they keep track of money. But then upon further discussion, I wanted to know, the way it's written, it sounds like that the CPA would go after grants. I think they, you want somebody, and I want clarification because this is your bill, you want the CPAs to be able to monitor all the FEMA money that comes in and make sure that it's being.
Not monitored to file for reimbursements and to keep track of those filings.
File for reimbursement.
Yeah, because first of all, the town of Paradise in California, which experienced the same kind of disaster as we did, hired Ernst and Young, it's a very prominent CPA firm, because they have the expertise. We have millions of dollars at stake and we can't afford to give this job to a county employee who already has a job. And this has been the practice in the past. So what's happened is we don't always get all the monies that we could be entitled to because we don't have professionals focusing on this assignment.
I wonder if there's an attorney who could tell us that by doing this, is it impacting the Kono decision or bringing in somebody on the outside to do a job that somebody in the county council, not county council, not us, the county of Maui could do? And I wonder if we could get an attorney to.
Thank you, Chair. The decision that Vice Chair Sugimura is bringing up is from the Supreme Court of Hawaii. In the nineties, there was a judicial opinion that that body issued that said, you can't outsource work that's traditionally done by civil servants unless you get the legislature to change the civil service law. So it's a valid point. It's something the county should always consider when hiring outside contractors. And it's something the administration will have to consider if they want to act in response to this resolution done by.
I don't think county employees traditionally are professional CIPs who, CPAs who can handle the volume of reimbursements that we are about to, you know, undertake.
I think that's a reasonable assumption. Thank you, Chair.
Roll call.
Pretend Tasha Kama?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Why don't you make an amendment? Too late?
Too late.
Okay. Come back to me then. Let me speak about it.
Councilmember Paulson?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Alice Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Uwuhodgens?
Yes.
Councilmember Senancy?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
No.
Council Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair, there are nine ayes, one no, motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, eight and one.
My name is Jen Mather and I am testifying on Bill eighty-six. Testify on this because I actually fell asleep reading it last night at 11 o'clock and was like, whoa, this thing is long. So if I'm feeling that way, and I read most of the stuff you guys put out, then imagine all the people in Lahaina and up at Kula, like, they're not going to read all that or they haven't read it and maybe they're going to read it because they realize the importance of it now. So I guess my testimony is, can we please have more time? So maybe like refer it to committee just for a little bit so we can discuss and testify at that time.
The next testifier is Erin Wade testifying on.
I'm here representing the debris task force that's been established in, for the emergency operation. I have been tasked with enrollment and outreach for debris management. I did provide you folks a flyer. I have to say, you know, we are building this program as we're coming to you because of the nature of the emergency response. So I completely understand hesitancy and time to absorb and want to get familiar with it. As you know, we submitted it last week and here we are this week. The second that this bill was ready, it got submitted because we're trying to be as responsive as possible. But just real quick, the flyer that I've provided you shows the continuum of the process for debris removal. The alternative debris removal program that's in front of you is really the secondary. It's not the primary. The primary program that we're trying to provide is the government-sponsored debris removal program where the property owner has no out-of-pocket cost for debris removal. So that is the number one. That is what we're trying to get organized as fast as possible to ensure we're making available to our community. The alternative is if you prefer not to go with a government program for whatever reason, what would those standards be? So that's the bill that's in front of you, more or less. We do want to be able to continue and expect to continue to allow folks to sign up with a right of entry agreement to choose to go with the government program. We're going to continue to educate. We have been to Kula. We'll be back in Kula next week, Monday. We're trying to give Lahaina a little time because reentry hasn't even officially started. As reentry starts, we would like, as the neighborhoods are allowed to have reentry, we'd like to come immediately behind and start talking about debris removal. You know, folks haven't even had the opportunity to say, be there and question what's next. So out of respect, we've been allowing that little bit of process, but immediately we intend to be able to provide the same kind of meeting we had in Kula, neighborhood by neighborhood. The goal is too, to have it be really informal. In Kula, we were able to do a small meeting, like 30 people, and that allows just question and answer, lots of one-on-one independent Q and A. When you do a big meeting, it's difficult for people to get all of their questions answered. We'll do 100 meetings if we need to. I really feel like it's such a personal question for folks. We're happy to be there as much as we need to, but just wanted you to take a little bit of the pressure off the alternative debris. That's not the one, of course, that we're expecting most people to go with. We're expecting most people to choose the no out-of-pocket cost for the government program. So I just want, we've had an army of folks come here to help us and set this up. We're modeling this after Butte County where Paradise fires were. And Cole Glennwright is going to follow me from California Office of Emergency Services. He's been very helpful in assisting us.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify. Not passing this bill today will not stop the Army Corps of Engineers from removing debris from people's property that wants it removed.
Thank you, Chair. So our intention is to continue moving forward with the right of entry process. Of course, whenever you're offering somebody the opportunity to participate in a program, they're going to ask us, what's the alternative? So we wanted as much information as we could have to provide folks. When I'm telling them, are you interested in signing up for this? If they're asking me, what's my alternative? I wanted to be able, you know, and look at them in the eye, tell them what that would be. When we went to Kula, I couldn't tell them that and they, most people still wanted to sign up for the Army Corps of Engineers program. But out of transparency, I think it is important that we be expeditious and making sure that we, we know and we're able to provide people with clear options.
And, and the other clarifying question I had is, a lot of this bill says director shall establish or must or need or whatever you want to say. Is there anything preventing the director from establishing that concurrently to the bill? Because similarly, when you say the alternative, we're kind of assigning penalties without what's been established.
Erin?
Thank you, Chair. My preference would be to let Corp Counsel answer that. I've been very focused on enrollment and outreach and that. I think that's a legal question. I should defer to them.
Thank you.
You said that you could proceed with the right of entry forms and the Army Corps of Engineers is one process. Would you stop that because we don't have this document passed? Would it hinder the movement forward?
Thank you, Chair. Our expectation is we'll continue moving forward with the right of entry process, but we do need at some point to be able to adopt this and clearly define what the rules and expectations are for the entirety of the program.
Okay, very good. And just for the, everybody's understanding, the reason why Erin said she spoke to the Kula residents, my group is small, so I got them together at Waipuna Chapel and we had a huge amount of support to answer questions. Then, next week, Monday, I'm having an Up Country Wildfire Resource Fair and Erin and the people who are here from EPA and others that are, can answer these questions, Army Corps, are going to be there so that people can come, talk stories. Engineers, are going to be there so that people can come talk story one-on-one. So I just want to clarify that, you know, we've been moving small steps forward.
My concern is more fundamental, and, and I'll just say it, and you don't have to respond. My, my concern is that the administration can do this without the council approval. Next question, Pro Tem Kama.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here, Ms. Wade. So, you know, you're going to have cultural monitors on site throughout this whole process. So how many cultural monitors do you have, and who are they?
Erin?
Thank you, Chair. The cultural monitors are being hired through the Army Corps of Engineers. They're not available for this meeting today, but we can get you a response to that, and that contract would be through them.
Okay. And the funding is coming from?
The funding is coming from FEMA.
So my question's on outreach. I understand that you said you're holding off a bit. I, you know, I, I'm hearing from a lot of people that they're not aware of this, they want, so this, this pamphlet right here, has it been passed out in West Maui? And then can you kind of speak to the other outreach that you plan to have?
Erin?
Thank you. Thanks for the question. So this morning, we did start the process of doing a video series, kind of like a small Khan Academy, to share like, what does the debris removal process look like so that can be accessible to everyone? We're going to make this available at all the disaster resource centers. We also have a postcard that's in production. Each of the properties themselves, when EPA completes debris removal, there's a sign placed at the property that states that you have to choose a path. You have to choose either to go with a government program or to select going with an alternative program before you can move forward with debris removal for health and safety reasons. So there's education at the property itself, and then there's, we're offering in multiple locations. And then what I'd like to do is schedule, like I said, up to 70 to 100 meetings over the coming month and a half to ensure we're meeting people where they are and getting them the information they need. I think Councilmember Sugimura would tell you, hearing from the subject matter experts themselves is very valuable. You know, I'm getting up to speed, just like all the rest of us are, but we've got folks to draw from who've been, unfortunately, through this many times before and know how to make sure that we do this efficiently and to the standards where health and safety can be protected.
So it looks like we've been having calls about the dust suppressant and some of the possible health effects. So would these owners have an option of using a more natural option?
Yeah.
Thank you. Again, I'll let Cole respond. The EPA is offering an option, a soil tackifier that would reduce dust. We heard a presentation about that at the Kula meeting. Most folks were excited about that opportunity to reduce dust. But again, I would love to have the experts come talk to you exactly about what it includes and if that, if that opportunity presents itself.
Thank you.
I can read Member Uuhajin's mind. Her question is, can you separate the up-country and, and West Maui?
The question is, in terms of scope of work? Is, are you asking a scope? So it's the entire thing?
No, the ordinance.
Oh, the ordinance. That hasn't been asked, and I, I would have to ask Corp Counsel if that could be done.
Chair, Councilmembers, my name is Cole Glennwright. I'm the Chief of Debris Operations for the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services. My team is here through a request from your governor to our governor through what's referred to as the Emergency Management Assistance Compact. My fear is not to start by saying, you know, on behalf of all of us, the state of California, we're so sorry for the loss experienced in your community. Our mission here, and I was asked to just kind of briefly introduce myself and make myself available as a resource, our mission is to share lessons learned and best practices to the extent they apply from what's unfortunately been a catastrophic series of wildfires California's experienced. You know, first and foremost, the 2018 campfire which affected the town of Paradise. You mentioned, Chair, I had the distinct privilege of working with the town of Paradise for the better part of two years in their recovery from that. You know, I wanted to provide the council brief assurance that the, both the specific texts of the ordinance or bill that's being considered here, along with the process writ large, mirrors very closely the process that Butte County used in the town of Paradise, along with many other successful recoveries, that City of Santa Rosa and Sonoma County and many, many others. Unfortunately, this is a bit of a time-tested process in California, and Maui County is, you know, to the extent practicable and with deep respect for the differences and cultural sensitivities, I think, as an outsider, doing what they can to align with best practice. You know, the ordinance or the bill, rather, speaks to, to both the public program and the alternate program. And I just wanted to provide perhaps a bit of context from California's experience, that the alternate program, which is the program through which property owners choose not to use the federally, the federal government's, you know, funded and operated program, usually represents a small minority of folks. On average, in California fires, we see roughly 15% of property owners choose to go with this alternate or, you know, colloquially the do-it-yourself program. We traditionally see folks opt for that program if perhaps they're well insured, if they're a commercial entity, and their insurer may have a contractor on standby for this sort of work, or for a litany of reasons, they want a bit more control over the process. I will say, however, you know, I've had the privilege of overseeing debris removal operations in diverse parts of California, everywhere from the city of Malibu to much less affluent places. And I think across the board, wildfire survivors find that the consolidated debris removal program, whether operated by the federal government or the state of California, is the right fit almost across the economic scale and levels of insurance. I also wanted to briefly address, because the bill speaks to a process through which if folks choose not to address the debris in any lawful manner, they could be, you know, subject to some sort of forced removal or baitment cleanup. You know, invariably, in California, we get a great deal of questions and concern about that, but also invariably, it's a very, very small percentage of folks that find themselves in that category. As I mentioned, I had the privilege of serving as the incident commander for part of the campfire response, where we cleaned up just under 11,000 individual residential properties that were destroyed between the town of Paradise and surrounding communities. We took under 100 votes through an abatement process.
Okay, so we'll probably ask you to be a resource person.
It would be a privilege.
Clarifying question. Thank you. You mentioned in your testimony that you work with diverse groups and communities. Have you ever worked with indigenous groups?
Yes, absolutely. So the state of California is home to an extensive set of federally recognized and non-federally recognized tribes, and our debris removal program brings them in as an integral partner and part of our incident management teams.
Thank you, members. This housekeeping measure amends the Maui County Code to allow the Director of Finance to conditionally remit taxes due on a property if the real property was damaged by a hurricane, fire, or another disaster defined by state law. I respectfully ask for the council member's support of the motion. Thank you.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes, motion carries. Ms. Clerk?
Chair, for referral to your Disaster Resilience International Affairs and Planning Committee is Bill 86, 2023, a bill for an ordinance relating to Maui wildfires debris removal.
I, I have a urgency to hear this if it gets referred to committee, and I really hope you get the resources to come here to answer some of the questions. I think it was the initial good discussion with Erin and Mr. Glennwright, sorry, and with Mr. Hopper, who helped write this bill, because I feel the urgency to have this discussion, and of course Lahaina hasn't had the opportunity to hear it. And if it does come to my committee, I would like to ask Chair if you would allow me to call a special committee meeting next week. Can that happen?
You know, in a time of crisis, I, I'm willing to move forward as fast as we possibly can. Just asking the members, and specifically Councilmember Paulton, because she's got boots on the ground over there, is if we pass it on this first reading and within this time for second reading, we go out and we, you know, educate the folks and let them know and testify on the second reading? Because I, I just, I kind of want to have a sense of urgency, and if we're not going to schedule this till we get into October, that's my concern.
Okay. Already, we see that Member Paulton is not inclined to do that.
Member?
In testimony, we, we heard that it's a very small amount of people that will opt for the non-government assistance alternative, and that's what this bill is. As I understand it from testimony only, I haven't done any deep dive, and I'm not an expert on this. It sounds like some of the reluctance is for West Maui, and it sounds like if up-country is wanting to move forward, that perhaps we can ask Corp Counsel if there's a way to just change the parameters or to just be for up-country for now until West Maui has an opportunity, the community has an opportunity to review the bill and understand the implications.
Member, Mr. Hopper? Could we separate the two areas to, so bifurcate, I suppose, the?
Well, not separate. Could we make this bill specific to up-country for now?
I, I would have a few concerns with that, and perhaps the groups that's, that's worked on this could, could add to that as well. But the, one of the issues is that while work might not be ready to move forward with Lahaina, the, the right-of-entry collection process is going to be very extensive for that. And my understanding is that FEMA and Army Corps of Engineers need to have a certain amount of those executed before they can move forward. Now, yes, one of the aspects of this bill is to establish the alternative program, but Section 5 is entitled Removal of Structural Debris and Hazard Trees Through the Government Program. It goes over the right-of-entry collection process. It, it talks about a department to do that and, and things of that nature. Now, without that in place, there's also a, a statement that says, any right-of-entry agreement executed prior to the effective date of this ordinance in a form approved by the county is considered enrolled in the government program. So that's to deal with right-of-entries executed prior to the date of this ordinance. And so we don't necessarily see not having this acted on stopping the right-of-entry process, but I think it would be, me looking at the county code, I, I, I really wanted to have a clear process, and this is modeled after what other jurisdictions have done in these situations, a clear process of, of debris removal dealt with comprehensively, including through the government program. So this is making clear that there's a government program and there's an alternative program. So, you know, I, I, I would have potentially some reservations about separating them out. It, it could be possible to have two different ones, although I would want perhaps the group to talk about that because obviously it's the same folks doing the, the debris removal, and they're, they're here to do that. So they, they may have some comment on, on that, but this was designed as, as, as to deal with all of the debris removal created by the, the fires as of, as, as described therein.
Well, what my concern is that the circumstances are different geographically, and there were no fatalities up-country either. So the issue of, you know, ashes and remains are different in both cases. So, and I think the up-country folks were able to return already to their properties. Is it true?
Yeah, I understand that that's true, although the debris removal, I think, is a bit, a different, of a different issue than the access to property for, for reentry. As they come down here, I just would want to clarify, absolutely not disputing that there's a drastic difference in them, but I don't know if through, through federal law and the program, if the, the program itself, as how, as far as how it would be dealt with in the ordinance, would generally be different.
No, my, my concern, and I'll make it real quick, is that the folks up-country had the advantage of going back to their properties already, and that's why they're more inclined and, and more ready to move forward on this program. Different in West Maui, many people haven't been able to go back yet, so it's going to take them a little bit more time, right? I would think.
Yeah, that, that could be true, but having the ordinance in, in place would, still, there, there would be a timeframe for enrollment in both of those and education. So the ordinance wouldn't necessarily, that I would see anyway, look drastically different between the two, the two areas, even though the cleanup would be different. I don't know if the legal requirements, I mean, that's ultimately, of course, up to the council, but as far as my drafting of, of the ordinance and review of the requirements, that would necessarily be different.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson, and then Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you, Chair. So in, in Section 9, it says this ordinance takes effect upon approval. Could we amend it to say this ordinance affects upon approval in Kula? And then if we're going to do it for a longer time for Lahaina, we could just add that for Lahaina at a later?
Mr. Hopper?
We'd probably have to make other, other amendments because, because together, this has statements that, I, I, other than just changing that, we probably need to change some more things. I, I suppose it could be possible, but I don't know if there's concern from, from the larger group who's working on this to have actually a separate ordinance for, for both areas. It, it could be possible. We'd have to do some more work than that, I think.
Okay, I like possible, because I, I can't see, you didn't write it in here, specific language to Lahaina has, you know, you didn't write it in there, so why couldn't you just have it say this ordinance takes effect upon approval in Kula? Anna Linda, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we could look at doing amendments along those lines, although again.
I think you answered it already. It's possible.
I'm okay with that if it's Kula and Anna Linda, if those people in that district are okay with it. Next Monday, Tuesday is okay. If it's okay with others for Lahaina's to, to start outreach, I mean, we can, we'd start outreach before the 25th and the 26th, but to have input from them.
So we're, and going back to committee referrals, if it wants to come to my committee, which is a nine-member committee, so Chair, would you allow this to happen on the 26th? And I can call.
Everybody okay for the 26? Okay, the only one has a frown. Member Rollins Fernandez?
No, just flights.
Flights. Oh, yeah, that's kind of hard for her. Can you, well, you don't have to come.
You can.
You, you can come, join online.
Yeah. That's fine. No objection. And then Chair, since I have the mic, would you, I know we've suspended all those, but for the record, the, the third resource person for the, for the record.
What is your name and title?
Aloha, Zeph McKee, representing Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. I am a debris operations planner for the, for the state.
Mahalo, Mr. McKee. Mahalo, Chair.
So anybody else on this side? Member Sinancy?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to quickly ask my question. If some of the residents opt out of using the dust suppressant, would they still have to pay for debris removal?
Erin? Oh, who? Mr. Glennwright?
Glennwright.
Yeah, turn it.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll do my best to answer that question, and without, you know, speaking for either the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency or the Army Corps of Engineers, but I can, you know, do my best based on how I understand the process. The proposal to use a tackifier for the purpose of dust suppression is considered as part of the Phase 1 operation, which the Environmental Protection Agency is leading, and that differs from Phase 2 in that there's not an opt-in, opt-out component to that. So to the extent the tackifier is applied during Phase 1, folks wouldn't be opting in or out, and it wouldn't have any bearing, to my knowledge, on whether they choose to opt into the Phase 2 program through the Army Corps or not. Does that answer your question, sir?
And, and Phase 2 would be debris removal?
Correct, yeah. At a very high level, Phase 1 refers to the automatic removal of household hazardous materials, asbestos and other substances. Phase 2 refers to the opt-in or opt-out removal of debris.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Member Paulton?
Thank you. I've been asked many questions, like, what if folks didn't register for FEMA? Would they still be qualified to get the federal or Army Corps or whoever you guys are to remove it? And then also that, what if their stone wall around their house is still intact? And then also, at what point would they know if their pad, housing pad, is okay? Would you remove that? Or how, how would you go about knowing what it is that you're going to remove from the property and what you're not going to remove from the property?
Thank you for the questions. I'll do my best to answer, again, in the interest of clarity, I'm here as an advisor from the state of. I'm here as an advisor from the state of California, so I have no operational control over these and the decisions. I think all the decisions you referenced are resting with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, who is operating under the direction of a unified command between the state of Hawaii, Maui County, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. But I'll be happy to answer your questions as best I understand them. On the first question of whether an individual must apply for FEMA individual assistance to qualify to submit a right-of-entry for the debris removal program, those two are distinct and separate, and there's not a bearing one or the other. I think, you know, it would be my professional opinion, folks apply for both if they're eligible for both, but they are two separate distinct programs. To your question of, you know, what will be retained or removed during the program, I think it's perhaps a bit early to opine on that. Each parcel will be individually inspected by the Army Corps. And a scope of work within the broad approval from the Federal Emergency Management Agency will be selected. Generally speaking, private property debris removal operations like this in the state of California involve the removal of all fire-impacted foundations based on, you know, the science that has shown when that type of fire burns on a foundation for that period of time, they will be removed. It's my understanding the federal government intends to follow that approach here and remove all building foundations. But again, I'm speaking just based on our experience in California, which may differ from what happens here. And I perhaps can defer the question on the stone walls to Mr. McKee with Haime.
Yeah, certainly. So stone walls and existing structures that appear to be sound will not be removed as they won't be eligible for that, according to FEMA's distinction on that.
And if we are able to have a meeting on the 25th or the 26th, would it be possible to have Army Corps of Engineers as a resource? We had EPA at the park answering questions, meeting with us, but I've never had an opportunity yet to ask any questions of the Army Corps.
We would gladly be able to provide you with that opportunity, so.
Awesome.
I have a question for Aaron or maybe Mr. Glenn Wright. I'm not sure. Okay, so Mr. Glenn Wright mentioned several agencies. You have U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, you have FEMA, and somebody else, yeah. Who is in charge?
That's an excellent question, Chair. Essentially, you know, this disaster response and recovery is operating pursuant to the National Incident Management System, which is a federal policy which regulates how states and the nation work together to respond to disasters. On the question of debris removal specifically, the agencies between Maui County, Haime, and FEMA have formed a debris task force, which is an inter-agency command group, which is providing direction down to the agencies performing the work. At the federal level, where, you know, this program will be almost exclusively operated by federal agencies at the state's request, FEMA is the lead agency for all disaster response and recovery. So they have issued mission assignments to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency.
So who's in charge?
At the federal level, FEMA is the coordinating.
So for this operation of debris removal, who is in charge?
FEMA is the overall lead agency for that work.
Okay, because I did have a call from a Lahaina resident who needed information. Called the Maui EOC, who was given a number in Florida. FEMA number in Florida. The FEMA guy in Florida gave him an Oahu number, so a Haime, I suppose. Haime gave him a Florida number. So it's really important to know who's in charge, yeah. And that's why our people are so frustrated because we don't know where the buck stops, really.
I couldn't agree with you more. And I will share, you know, California's experience has been that while FEMA is here to provide the federal resources, it's paramount that state and local leadership remain engaged and in the driver's seat throughout this process because these federal agencies are here on your request to help you, not the other way around.
Thanks. So the answer was FEMA, right?
To be clear, the answer of which is the lead federal agency.
Which state? FEMA? Florida FEMA where? You don't know? No, I'm serious. Where? FEMA who?
So again, I want to be careful not to speak on behalf of FEMA or the federal government here. But FEMA Region 9 is the region which is running this operation. They have staff both deployed here and at the State Emergency Operations Center in Oahu. And there, I believe it's Mr. Robert Fenton is the chief federal disaster response coordinator.
Region 9 is what state?
Region 9 includes this state, California, and a couple others.
No, but he is in what state?
I'm not sure which state, Mr. Fenton.
Okay. Anybody else I saw? Member comma.
So Chair, just so that I get it clear in my head, we're going to send this to committee.
Yep.
Whenever we can.
Yep.
But that, was Mr. Hopper going to work on the amendments to this bill so that when it comes back, the issue of separating Lahaina from Kula?
Well, we really didn't vote on it, but you know, maybe we can, you can give us an idea if this is the direction you would like court counsel to go in?
Mr. Hopper has a.
Mr. Hopper.
If, could I have just a second to have a few comments on the ordinance? You know, so this was, I mean, this is my first go-around with the ordinance of this nature. So it was modeled after California jurisdictions and others that have used this for debris removal in the past. And a few questions. One is on the enforcement provisions. Currently, under the Maui County Code 9.32, there could be nuisance abatement or fines or other enforcement action taken on properties with debris on them now, under the county code, without any further changes. Now, of course, that's not going to happen in these situations, but that's allowed under current code. So the fine amounts were really not any different than the code. It says in this ordinance that if a property owner does not sign up for either the government program or the alternative program by a certain deadline established by the department involved in that, then they're subject to enforcement, not before that. So as far as fines. So that's an important distinction. And so until that deadline established by the alternative program has lapsed, that's when the enforcement provisions of this ordinance kick in. So in that sense, they are more, they're different than the current code that you have on the books for nuisance abatement. The second question is, is having this done as part of the emergency proclamation? This is going to be an ordinance that's going to be looked at to be in place for a substantial period of time because the removal process, I understand, is going to take a long time. Over a year, maybe, you know, it's hard to have an exact time, but potentially longer than the provisions of the disaster declaration may be in effect. And this is the approach taken in other places. And again, you know, what's right for other places doesn't always, isn't always what you would do on Maui. But as far as having the council adopt an ordinance, that's what's done. It's called an urgency ordinance in other places where there are fires to fire cleanup to deal with. And those are adopted on an emergency basis by local governments. And so that was the thought behind doing this as well, to have those regulations in place, to have it made clear, here is a government program, here is an alternative program, here's what they involve, who's going to be running them. And not having those in place while this is going on was the concern. So that was the urgency. The urgency was up country was ready to go. And the right-of-entry collection process for Lahaina, because there are so many people affected and so much work to be done, that that was, that due to that timing, that was the urgency behind it. Yes, certainly ideally, there would be more time to deal with this, but that was the thought behind it. So and so just to deal with those couple issues is that the fines are modeled afterwards currently in the code and enforcement. And the reason that you have that at some point is that if it's not, if the debris is not dealt with either through the government or the alternative program, to have it stay there indefinitely could be extremely dangerous. So that's the reason why at some point there are enforcement options. But as it is in the ordinance, there's a deadline for applying for the state program or the government program for the alternative program that would be established by the agencies. And if an owner doesn't enroll in either of those programs by the alternative program deadline, that's when the enforcement could kick in. And that's the reason behind that was because if you just have that stay indefinitely, that can be very dangerous. And under the current code, again, Section 9.32, the county right now has the authority to send property owners notice that they have to remove, it's called trash and hazardous waste, but in the definition includes ash or debris from structures. You know, that's subject to abatement under the current county code. So this provision is sort of specific to these disasters. It understands that this was caused by this disaster, that there's a cleanup process and to establish that. And without that in the code, again, the ordinance says that any right-of-entry agreement executed prior to the effective date for the government program is considered enrolled. Once this ordinance is adopted, I think they're enrolled anyway through other means, but that's clear here. So we have that, but I think it would be better to have something in place to govern this program sooner rather than later as this effort is ongoing. And so that was the thought behind the expediency. But as far as sort of bifurcating into different ordinances, that could be possible. One concern was that the requirements for both should be the same as far as the programs because FEMA is doing that work. If one goes forward, I suppose it's possible if there's a committee meeting on the other ordinance and it ends up being different, that when that comes up to council for action, you could amend the previous ordinance that's already adopted. I don't know what our options are there. But I'm already looking through now and thinking of how this could be repurposed to deal with up country only. There may be some solutions, but again, I don't want to miss anything just doing it on the floor with this. But I mean, I understand none of this is ideal with how the process works, but it's, there's a reason why this is being done this way.
Proton comma.
Thank you, Chair. So the reason behind doing all of this is the timeline, right? You mentioned the deadline. And.
The deadlines would be established by the departments who administer those programs. There's another option, if, under Buick County's ordinance, the county council by resolution established the deadline for the alternative program. It's another option that you can consider. But the concern with having it be too far in the future is that, as I understand it, abatement through the, if someone fails to sign up, could be done by people that are qualified to do that in the event the owner doesn't do that. So we would want to have those folks available within that timeline. But yeah, Buick County had a resolution establishing the alternative program enrollment deadline.
Okay. So then my next question is, what's the rush? I mean, in terms of the deadline that's being set. Because my sense is that there is a deadline, there should be a deadline. But who's the deadline supposed to help? Does it help FEMA, the federal government, or does it help the people that are trying to figure out how to move forward even in their state of grief? So.
I, I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think in, perhaps, folks, the disaster, the professionals on this can talk about it more. But I think the reason to establish a deadline for other one is, again, so you don't have have this hazardous situation forever. You know, you give a reasonable deadline, but the reason you have a deadline is to make sure that you can, you know, before, you know, hopefully not, but heavy rains come in or things like that happen, you want to avoid.
Okay.
Member Paulson, then Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you, Chair. I understand about the reason for the deadline. It just, you know, if folks that have been calling my office could establish a deadline that they want to return to their properties, they would. So it's just, you know, that feeling of these deadlines are being imposed on them with no say of when they will get to their homes. And then being have to make a decision about what they're going to do with their property without knowing or getting to see their property is a difficult position for West Maui residents to be in. And so that's why it would be nicer for the people if, you know, it acknowledged those stages that different people are in. If all 19 homes already saw their property and are ready for the next step. Of course, we don't want to stop them from taking that next step, but West Maui hasn't been given that opportunity and they really want it like yesterday, most of them. So it's, in that way, it's when we talk about it, even the word deadline, today's the deadline to apply for Red Cross Assistance for Shelter. There's a deadline for FEMA. People still haven't made up their minds about that. There's a deadline for unemployment insurance, which nobody has received yet. So I mean, there's just a lot of deadlines on folks without a lot of reciprocation of acknowledging their right to want to see what's left. Or even if their house is still standing, they want to go to their house. And the inequity of, you know, folks on the northern borders of the fire in Lahaina being able to live in their house when people on the southern border of Lahaina are not allowed to even access their still-standing houses. Just pointing it out, I guess.
Is there a question? Did you want to respond or are you just letting them know?
I mean, if we as the county are putting on this deadline to them, is there any opportunity for them to put a deadline on us that they want to return to their property before having this deadline imposed on them?
Are you, any of you in a position to answer that question? No. Maybe, Aaron, you can find out the answer?
Thank you, Chair. The reentry process, according to Director Olivera, is to begin September 25th. So I do know that the process, there is a process and it's started. I'm not part of the decision-making for that team. But he did have a press conference yesterday sharing that information. And as we said, just with this, I think what we would like to be able to do, as you said, is when people are able to visit their property, understand whatever their situation is, the terms and conditions of their situation, that we're able to be ready for them with what their options could be. So that's kind of, that's how we're trying to position ourselves. I think we don't have to establish deadlines out of the gate. One of the conversations had, the goal would be for us to publish and encourage folks to sign up for reentry without a deadline initially so we can determine exactly the level of engagement. And in a lot of cases, that is how good is our education and outreach been? You know, so if we're able to increase and improve our education and outreach, I think that improves the potential for us to get a necessary level of coordination to move forward.
So I've also got 10 questions directed at me about how they do sign up for the reentry process. But there isn't a way to sign up for the reentry process for Lahaina today.
Aaron?
Like I said, Chair, unfortunately, I'm not part of that discussion, so, but I can, we can get information back to you about that.
Vice Chair Sugimura and then Member Cook.
So it's important, these questions. And the Maui Recovers website, would that have information that is talking about this? Or is it only about debris removal?
Yes, there's a page on Maui Recovers that I think is getting updated as a result of the press conference that occurred yesterday. So we'll try to get that information up right away.
And Chair, one day I hope we could have a meeting with the new director. And Chair, one day I hope we could have a meeting with the new director of MIMA. I know he was on TV yesterday talking about this exact thing. But he probably has answers to this puzzle, which, which maybe is, you know?
Okay, when we have your meeting?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, because we're, we can't solve too much in this meeting. But we have some people who haven't been able to speak yet. And Mr. Cook, you're one of them.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Glen Wright.
Glen Wright.
Thank you, sir. When, from your experience in cleaning up after this type of fire, the, the heat and the magnitude of it, what's the process as far as like underground utilities, dry wells, cesspools? And then the slabs, from my perspective as a contractor, generally the slabs would always be, would never pass structural and it wouldn't, you wouldn't want it. So will all of that be addressed? To what depth, my question is? And then also the question, is this, the construction debris removal going to be processed so that the concrete's crushed and potentially reused for aggregate and whatnot? If it isn't contaminated? That's one question. Second question is, is part of the, this framework of deadline and whatnot so that FEMA can line up the personnel and the equipment to execute the work?
Thank you for your questions. I'll do my best to answer them with the caveats I gave before that I'm speaking about California's historical experience and not speaking on behalf of the federal government. As you mentioned, traditionally, foundation, building slabs, foundations are removed 100% as part of this program if a building burned on top of it for the reasons you cited, the, the heat and the interface with the concrete there. Cesspools and septic tanks traditionally are not removed as part of this program. I think, you know, across our fires and communities, we see varying levels of damage or lack thereof to that infrastructure. I think the most important kind of lesson learned we have in that space is the necessity to clearly market and protect it during the removal operation. And it is my understanding the right-of-entry permit that will be provided for folks to sign up will provide space for them to identify if they have that sort of infrastructure on their parcel. And I believe it will also provide them an opportunity to provide a, a small sketch indicating where that may be. So that as the heavy equipment operations move forward, there'll be every opportunity possible to protect that infrastructure to the extent it's undamaged. Again, you know, I want to be careful not to overstate on the concrete and its reuse. Traditionally in California, that is diverted and, and used as a recycled material, crushed, used for road base or other purposes, metals are similarly diverted and recycled. You know, it's perhaps a bit nascent to opine if that will happen here, but I believe the Army Corps is planning to follow similar approaches. Do you want to?
So as, as far as recycling goes, the Army Corps is already planning on using adjudicated vehicles, for example, that have been burnt and recycling those with local recyclers, as well as, like you said, any uncontaminated metals. So that is in the works and the plans with Army Corps at this time.
Okay, does that answer your question?
I believe you had a second question, so I'd be happy to.
Oh, I thought that was both okay.
Wonderful. To the question of whether, you know, the, the need for a plan and a deadline is in part to ensure that there is critical mass to begin? I think there is truth to that. There is a need to have a substantial number of folks that want to enroll in the program, enroll in the program really as quickly as possible so that the Army Corps and its contractors has a body of work. I will say, you know, I don't think that the bill here considers establishing a firm deadline. And in California's experience, we would not do that at this stage. We certainly would never intend to provide a, you know, a requirement and a deadline for folks to sign up before they've had an ample chance to see their property. And to be clear, I don't think the bill is considering that. But all that said, there is certainly a need, once the other important predecessor steps are taken, that, you know, a substantial number of folks enroll if they want to do so so that the cleanup can begin in earnest as quickly as possible.
Anybody else? Don't forget, we're going to take this up on the 25th or 26th? 26th. Members to Nancy.
Thank you, Chair. I was just thinking if we could either have the company, they got the contract for the cleanup with the Army Corps Engineering here at the next committee meeting to answer some questions.
Given, given proper notice, yes, we could happily provide, make sure someone from the minister.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Member Sugimura, can you make note of? Okay, good. Did you have a question? Member Uuhu Hodgens?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a quick question. I know not too many people go with the alternative version, but if they so choose to do so, how much does that typically cost? I know that there's probably a case-by-case basis, right? But let's just say the house is leveled. How much would that cost somebody if they wanted to do it themselves?
Well, I can give pricing on what it costs in the state of California. I'm sure it's quite different here in, in your state. It, it ranges around $70,000 to properly do that cleanup. Larger structures can be substantially more, smaller structures can be less. Again, you know, that estimate doesn't begin to take in the complexities of doing this work here, the potential, you know, contractor scarcity you may face here and other factors.
Why would anybody want to pay for that themselves?
That's an excellent question. I think there is, you know, often a small percentage of folks who are insured to that level, primarily corporate entities, business entities. And their preference would be to have complete control over the cleanup, use a contractor of their choice. But as I mentioned in my testimony, I think the consolidated debris removal program is the right choice for the vast majority of them.
Member Cook?
I've spoken with some local contractors who are concerned about the manpower that's going to be required for this, how much of it, is the prime contractor local state of Hawaii? Or is that somebody coming from the mainland? The rumor, what it was, was somebody from the mainland had a contract with FEMA and they were looking for 200 employees, which was ultimately going to scalp like the majority of the workforce from the existing contractors. Could you clarify that?
So just to clarify, as far as prime contractor or main contractor, FEMA has issued a federal mission assignment to the Army Corps of Engineers. And the Army Corps of Engineers will then outsource to, or will then subcontract to further subcontractors. I won't speak for the Corps of Engineers, but in conversations that I have had with them, they have every intent to hire every local provider on island that can qualify, so.
Okay. Anybody else? One last question, and Erin, you don't have to answer it right now. But on the debris removal, I'm curious where it's going because we don't have a place yet. Is that going to be ready?
I would like to defer to John Smith if I could. He's in the audience and has been participating in the conversations for the infrastructure task force.
John, are you prepared to answer the question? If not, it's okay. You can wait until the 26th. Okay, all right. Thank you, John. All right, members? Any objections to deferring, referring this to the BFED committee?
No objections.
No objections? Chair? Member Ronald Fernandez?
Under what item? Or are we just saying that we're going to waive our, the subject matter topic? Because it's not economic development or are we saying that it's a budget thing?
Everything is budget.
Uh, this is my policy really, but.
Well, let's ask Member Paulson, do you mind?
No, no, no. It's not a question for Member Paulson releasing it. I'm just, just for the record, are we saying that we're just going to put it in that committee because that's our prerogative too?
Okay, the only other one I can think of would be the Y Committee.
Because it has nine?
You have nine? Yeah, you have nine. You want to take it on the 26th? No, okay.
I'll take it.
All right. So apparently we have only one taker at this point. Any objections to this being referred to the BFED committee?
I just would request Army Corps of Engineers be requested as a resource.
And the contractor.
You're writing on this though?
Yeah.
And Chair, it's not that I have any objections. I'm just trying to follow our rules when they are not suspended.
Well, we suspended them, so you know, we can't.
For the day. For this item really, but.
Only because it's an unusual situation and I'm sure you're not.
Right, and I just want it stated for the record why we're doing what we're doing so that when we look back on precedent, we understand why we made decisions the way we did.
Yes.
Okay. So we're putting it in that committee because the Chair was willing and there's nine members.
Yes.
Okay. No objections.
Member Cook?
Thank you. And for my colleagues, I wanted to clarify one of the reasons that I would prefer not to be in the Y Committee. Because it will enable me as one of the nine members to participate in more in-depth during the meeting. So, well, I'm just saying the reason I was yielding to that. And this is clarification, this is for a meeting on the 26th, correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Chair. Yes, Member Ronald Fernandez?
The subject matter committee would be driven as it states. And so no pressure to anyone else to take it. I just, I'm just, we're, we generally follow the rule of putting it under the subject matter committee. And if we don't, then we explain why we're not. That's all. I'm all right, Chair.
Right. And Member Paulson has graciously yielded, so thank you. So they're up, I didn't see any objections, so, so ordered that this matter will be sent to the BFED committee.
So tonight at 5:00 PM is the deadline to sign up for Red Cross assistance. You can call 1-800-R-E-D-C-R-O-S-S. There's currently about 7,500 people in Red Cross shelters as well as other shelters that are open from employers that are not included in that count and people staying with friends, family and camping out. We're moving forward with our right-of-entry application for Napele Park as a educational resource center. They're testing the gallons per minute on the hydrant there to see if it matches the square footage. And shout out to Lahaina, Read the Bill, Bill 86, so that you're prepared for the 26th of September. And the agenda will be posted six days in advance.
Yeah. So for upcountry on, tomorrow I'm going to be at the Upcountry Farmers Market in case anybody wants to come in, you know, talk about anything or talk story. And then on Monday from 1:00 to 7:00 at the Kula Community Center, we're having a wildfire resource fair, just for anybody that wants to, you know, talk about different things that may affect them with employment or, you know, other, other issues besides this. But Erin is.
What time?
1:00 to 7:00. But Erin is bringing this team. So in case there are property owners that have questions, you know, they'll be available for that. And then we're having water being distributed also because we, we have Zone 1, which was a significant portion from Ulupalakua. And portions of Kula has been released from the Water Advisory. But 2, 3, 4, and 5 zones are still on the Water Advisory. And as it was explained to me, it's because it's closer to the fire area, you know, the places that burnt upcountry. And so those are still under the Water Advisory and not able to drink. And you know, the, the same things that you've been hearing. So just those sections are. And I look forward to moving forward. I mean, this is a huge situation. I want to thank the, what's happening upcountry also is there's a hui that has formed. And basically they want to protect, you know, so erosion and the watersheds that this disaster brought forward by the, where the fire whipped through with the high winds. And that's where all the houses burnt, not all, but a significant part of the houses burnt. So there's a hui formed already of how to preserve this section. So I want to thank them.